Okay, you're recording.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to call the Bridgewater Town Council December 15th meeting to order. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, I do have one condolence to read. A letter of condolence to the family of Eldon G. Souza upon his passing on the 23rd of November 2020. Mr. Souza served in the United States Navy aboard the USS John Paul Jones DD-932 during the Korea War. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Souza along with any other veterans or first responders who have passed. Thank you. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 330A, paragraph 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. All righty, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 20th, 2020 meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
None.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Any other councilors? This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Sorry, Mr. Colomotus isn't here. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the December 1st, 2020 meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
None.
Mr. Souza?
No, sir.
Any other councilors? This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to announcements from the president. I do have an announcement, I'll say it that way. So my intent for 2021 is to keep the town council meetings, keep the start time to 7:00 PM. Would probably see that for the foreseeable future. And then if the president who follows me, or if councilors decide that we need to change that back to 7:30, that's obviously an option. But I just wanted to let everyone know, at least for the beginning of 2021, these meetings barring any unforeseen circumstances will stay at 7:00. Any questions from the councilors? Okay, seeing none. Don't have any proclamations. Citizens open forum. If there are any citizens of Bridgewater who would like to speak, please keep it for three minutes. And for the record, please state your name and your street. Are there any citizens who would like to speak for Citizens Open Forum? And I don't see anyone, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. Appointments. Planning Board Associate Member Astrid Rojas. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment.
Moved.
Moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
None. Thank you, Ms. Rojas, for volunteering.
I didn't cut the second. Frank, okay. Well, Frank, any discussion, Frank?
No, sir.
Okay, any questions from the councilors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, nine against.
And I'd like to echo, it was Mr. Fitzgibbon saying, Ms. Rojas, thank you very much for stepping up. Okay, the time, you're very welcome, thank you very much. The time is now 7:09. I'd like to open the meeting of petition P. 2020-024, new Class II auto dealer, College Motors, Inc., 365 Elm Street. Is the petitioner here? Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
Mr. President, no, this is actually an existing Class II used auto dealers' location and the ownership of the actual auto dealers' businesses is switching, hence the need for a new Class II license.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? Don't see any, do you, Ann?
No, I don't.
Okay, is there anyone from the public speaking in favor of the petition? I don't see anyone, Ann, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition of the petition? I don't see anyone, do you, Ann?
No, I don't.
Okay. Are there any questions from the town councilors? Okay, seeing none from the town councilors, I will close the hearing at 7:11. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
None.
Mr. Chase?
No, none.
Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay. All right, moving on to license transactions. Petition P. 2020-025, new common vic license, sugarcane, 180 Winter Street. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
None, I just wish the new proprietor as well.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Okay, any questions or comments from any other councilors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Mr. Dutton, I apologize, I probably should have asked if everything's in order. Looking at it, it looks like it's good to go, so.
It is.
Got a little ahead of myself, I apologize. All righty, moving on to annual license renewals, so we have a few of those to go. Go through, I should say. Petition P. 2020-026, annual renewal, antique dealer. Mr. Dutton, anything to add on this?
Nope, this has been our one antique dealer for a number of years and all is in order and I encourage a positive vote.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None.
Mr. Chase?
No, none.
Any questions from any councilors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Mrs. Loesch?
I think we lost, I don't see her on the line.
Yeah, I think she might have dropped out. Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, and I see Ms. Loesch has reappeared back.
Okay, Mrs. Loesch, did you, we're voting on the Antiques Dealer Annual License Renewal.
Yes, I lost service, yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, petition P. 2020-027, annual renewal, pawn secondhand gold dealers. Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
No issues here, all the same licensee as the previous licensees as the previous year.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None.
Mr. Gallagher?
None.
Any other councilors? No. Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to petition P. 2020-028, annual renewal, annual entertainment, no alcohol. Entertained a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None, thank you.
Mr. Rushton?
None, thank you.
Any questions from any other councilors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to petition P. 2020-029, annual renewal, auto amusement, no alcohol. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None, thank you.
Mr. Souza?
No, thank you.
Any councilors with any questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Dutton, I still keep jumping over you, so I will get back on that track. Moving on to petition P. 2020-030, annual renewal, lodging houses. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None.
Mr. Rushton?
I have none, thank you.
Any other councilors?
I just.
Mr. Wood?
I didn't hear from, I don't think we heard from Mr. Dutton, no issues with the lodging houses this year?
No, no severe issues. I can tell you that on a yearly basis, we do have discussions with the fire department, fire chief and the police chief and the building inspector regarding lodging houses. And two years ago, there were an inordinate number of calls for service at several of the lodging houses, not all. The police chief has had, and the fire chief have had conversations with the owners of both of those or all of those lodging houses. We have seen calls for service this year, not quite as many as the prior year. And obviously, we continue to be concerned, but nothing has risen to the level yet of conducting a license revocation hearing. So at this point, I have no problem with the renewal of the licenses. The only caveat being that when we do have a license that's abused, we will go to the council and we will request a license revocation hearing in front of you. So that is always an option, but at this time, I have no objection to voting these licenses.
Thank you.
Me too, Mr. Wood, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. George?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
If I might, throw you to the town attorney because we've had this issue come up before and I just want to make it clear on the record. Mr. Owens, the annual license process is not the appropriate venue. I believe you have advised us in the past to take action against any of these licenses, that it's more in the line of a license revocation hearing and proper notice and due process, et cetera, correct?
That is correct, yeah, it's a much cleaner process to bring it forward as some sort of violation, have the applicant there, have proper notice, allow for due process, allow them to give their two cents, obviously, before you guys take action. So this is a renewal. Statutorily, renewals of these types of licenses are kind of pro forma. But certainly, if there is an issue, it should be brought through a more of a formal revocation proceeding that due process is involved.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Just a follow-up question then. Is this, since we're the licensing board in this situation, and this is, as the town attorney says, a pro forma, this question is also to the town attorney. Could we turn over the license renewal process to the town manager with a report that has been all done and avoid this each year?
I believe that you can, I don't quote me on that as it relates to this particular type of license, but I do believe you can by ordinance, yes. I can look into that for you though, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to petition P. 2020-031, common vic, no alcohol. Mr. Dutton, anything to add on that?
No, let me just, did we, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm missing, no, nothing to add on that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
None, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
No, no.
Any other councilors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus? Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to petition P. 2020-032, annual renewal, auto dealers, Class I, II, and III. Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
I have nothing to add, Mr. President. I do have one notation on number 15 on your list. Bridgewater Auto Parts has an outstanding state tax liability, not a local liability, but outstanding state liability. And we will hold that license until there's an arrangement made with the state and we get notification.
If that's not satisfied by the end of the year, then they would not be able to operate, correct?
Correct, that's absolutely correct.
All right, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
Moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
No, none.
Any other councilors? Okay, requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to petition P. 2020-033, annual renewal, all alcohol and related attendant licenses. Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
Nothing at this time, no sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None, thank you.
Mr. Souza?
No, thank you.
Okay, any other councilors? This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons? Mr. Colomotus? Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to petition P. 2020-034, annual renewal, taxi cab license, A&amp;A Metro Transportation, doing business as Bill's Taxi. Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
Nothing tonight, no.
I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Moved.
Okay, Mr. Souza, any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None, thank you.
Any other councilors? Okay, requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, we do not have any presentations, moving on to town manager's report. Mr. Dutton, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I think, as everybody knows, the Mitchell School bids were returned pursuant to an RFP that was issued for construction. We received six general contractor bids in the Mitchell School Building Committee met last night to review those. We had a budget, construction budget, and a, sorry, a construction budget of $63,164. The low construction bid, including all, I believe, our eight alternates, came in at $50,602,000 and change. So the very good news is, it appears that we'll be able to save taxpayers a little over $12 million on the construction of the Mitchell School. That's extremely good news. The projected winning bidder is Bacon Construction from East Providence. They are pretty well-versed in school building. They've done a number of them and they're just wrapping up a project in Millis, Massachusetts. They have an exceptional decam rating, 95%, which is excellent. The school building committee will meet again on January 11th to finalize all the project numbers. So exact numbers should be set in stone at that point. And I can give you a whole breakdown of the finances. It'll be much better detailed after January 11th, so that's very good news. The committee's, the building committee's recommendation now goes to the full school district committee for acceptance. And once that happens, then we execute a construction contract and obviously issue a notice to proceed on the project. So timeline is still good with a projected completion date of July 8th of 2022. So I'm happy to now say that with a little more confidence that we will be under budget and I have no reason to think that it will not be on, not be on time at this point. The other piece that I think we've talked about before, the district is anticipating issuing a $30 to $35 million bond in January, which will take advantage of what really are very ultra-low interest rates right now. So that's not the way a project like this would normally work, but we're doing everything we can to really lessen the impact to taxpayers and that's one way to do it. So as I say all the time, any more information or people want to see all the information that the committee has seen, www.BridgewaterSchoolProject.com is the place to go. But that is overall, at this point, very, very good news, so happy to take any questions on that.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you for the update, Mr. Dutton. And I want to acknowledge a great job done by, obviously, the building committee superintendent, yourself, all of those involved, much appreciated. First, hearing 50 relative to roughly 63, and you said it's 12-plus million savings, that's great. We share that with the state, right?
Well, essentially, we share that with the state. So proportionally, building costs are offset, there's a percentage that the state offsets, but proportionally, yes, that is a savings.
So, and that leads into my next question. I know you said more detail would be available after the next meeting, which I appreciate. But it would be helpful to know, because I know there are certain items that are non-reimbursable, right? That the town is going to pay 100% for.
Correct.
So if that's in relation, call it 83%, 50 out of 60. If those non-reimbursables are 83% of the 50, that's cool. If they're still as big as the architect thought, then we don't save as much and the savings between us and the state shift a little bit, because they're only going to pay us on what's reimbursable. So when you get those numbers, if you could just break it down between, you know, what we thought we'd get from the state as far as reimbursables versus non-reimbursables and what the bid came in at, that would be great for a deeper understanding of what's going on. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I also echo that this is great news. I would like to see those numbers as Mr. Fitzgibbons asked about, because it does change the proportion a little bit. I hear that the builder is just finishing up a project in a nearby town and that they did an excellent job there. So I'm hopeful that they'll do just a greater job here. The question, Mr. Dutton, is, given that the bonding may take place in January, when will we know what the impact to the real estate taxes will be and the timing of those?
Great question, it will not be in this fiscal year, so it may be at the end of fiscal year '22. But again, I'll have much more information on that after the 11th as well. A lot plays into how much actually gets bonded and the timing of the bond and the sale of the bond and whether or not it makes financial sense to push the interest payment out to fiscal '23. I don't think that will be the case, I think there probably will be a benefit to doing an interest payment in fiscal year '22, but that's all coming.
And a follow-up, if I may. So the question that was put to the voters was for $81 million and it looks like the cost will be estimated to be uncut. eighty-one million, and it looks like the cost will be estimated to be under that. Is there a way that we can cap our savings to ensure that we actually get twelve million dollars in savings or something like that so that we don't run up and escalate the bill to eighty-one million again?
Uh, it would be very difficult to escalate the bill to eighty-one million. I think, I think this council, and certainly I, will be quite vocal about making sure that the school is built. Last night, the question came up, is there anywhere where the design sort of skimped, and, and maybe we should allocate more money to, to sort of a, a, you know, skimpy or does, design, area where it was get more skimpily designed. And to his credit, the designer said, absolutely not. The school was designed to be a fifty-year structure. There was not any place that they skimped out. He, he sees no reason to add any, any cost that, that hasn't been designed at this point. So, it's been designed. We've gotten a bid for, call it fifty million dollars. That's the school that we're going to build. We do have a contingency of a little over five million dollars, which should be plenty for, for any unforeseen issues that come up, which have to be dealt with in a change order. But I think as the council knows, I certainly don't like change orders, and change orders are, in my, my mind, really only appropriate where there's an unforeseen circumstance. So, committee's done a great job, you know, really refining the design of the, of the building. The architect has done a great job translating the committee's desires into, onto paper, and so I don't anticipate any, any scenario where there'd be a, an additional twelve million dollars added to this project, just because it could. I think that was, that message was delivered pretty clearly last night.
Mr. George?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Um, we didn't, we, we didn't vote for a particular number in, in the debt exclusion. We voted to exclude from debt a certain amount of money that would be determined. We, we determined it as a council. It's, the, the, the voters, and this is always an issue, and, and I, I apologize to Mr. Wood for bringing it up, but everyone always says, well, I need to know the number in the vote. You can't even put the number in the vote, and I guess I'll put this to Mr. Rollins. You can't put a number in that vote because bond council won't authorize it. It's not legal to the state. They won't certify it. So, the town never voted for a number, and we, as a town council, voted what we would, what we would bond as a maximum, and just like we always do, if we can come in lower, we'll come in lower. But, Mr. Rollins, could you just clear that up a little bit, just for folks at home? I know, you know, the council understands. I know Mr. Dutton understands it, but...
I, I think you're exactly right. I know we had had this discussion before. I think we had this discussion at the point in time when you, you guys were trying to talk with Mr. Dutton about a specific number, but you, you don't vote the specific number in that sense. So, you're, you're a hundred percent right, and I think these kind of conversations are what are going to have to occur to keep the public involved about what the costs look like as we go through the process, which is, seems to me what you guys are doing currently. So, I completely agree with Mr. Fitzgibbons and his interpretation of that.
Any other questions? All righty, moving on to COVID nineteen update.
All right, COVID nineteen, since our last meeting, we have had quite a spike in community cases. I think last meeting we were forty. We're now at a hundred and ten community cases. We're seven BSU cases and about twenty, well, exactly twenty Department of Correction cases. So, we have seen some uptick there. We've also seen a pretty dramatic uptick in staff cases, which we are tracking fairly carefully, very carefully, and I can tell you that we will be in the red. The state gives, as you know, colors. They track the prior two weeks of, of infection rate, so they, we will be in the red again when those numbers are released on Thursday. But, but we are looking at a pretty substantial trend in, in the positive case area, so we're, we're a bit concerned about that. I can tell you that DPH is, is expecting more, a couple of prolonged spikes after Christmas and again after New Year's. So, so we're sort of prepping for that. So, I, I don't think we've seen the worst of numbers yet. I can tell you that in terms of staff cases, we, we have been very lucky. We have had relatively minor symptoms or, or pretty, pretty minor cases. We have not seen a serious case amongst the staff yet that I'm aware of, so we're keeping our fingers crossed in, in that regard. We did, as I think the council knows, we did revert to appointment-only access in municipal buildings. I don't think that's going to have a huge impact on the community. We, we tried to get the word out pretty well, and we've also put up a fair amount of signage, so hopefully that message is, is out. I think this time of year, there tends to be a lull to town offices, quite, quite frankly. But, in regardless of that, if anybody needs face-to-face access, all you have to do is call the department, and they'll pick up the phone or they'll call you right back and set up an appointment. So, so that, that should, that should satisfy those that need some face-to-face attention. But I do warn, we do have several offices in town that have been impacted by, by COVID, either employees having to quarantine for exposure purposes or, or in isolation because they've actually tested positive. So, I ask that, that folks be patient, and, and we try to make sure that everyone, everyone gets the help they need, but, but just try to be patient on, on that end. I can tell you, we have not been privy to very much information on the particulars of vaccine distribution other than what's really been reported in the news. But one thing I am going to do at the request of our water and sewer superintendent and the staffs is, is request that the state allow water and sewer operators to be included in the, in the early rounds of vaccination. So, they're, they're critical employees and, quite frankly, often get overlooked as, as critical infrastructure employees. So, we're going to make sure that we, we voice our opinion about how they should be vaccinated pretty early on in the process. But, that's what I have for COVID tonight, but I'm certainly happy to answer questions.
Mr. Wood?
Thanks. I know other communities are testing their, their sewer flows to see if there's a, any incident of virus and what the uptick on there is. Is Bridgewater doing anything like that?
We do. We, we test, we test the, every day, both water and sewer. COVID, we do know that COVID effectively cannot survive in the water supply, but it can survive in the, in the sewer, sewer line. So, so those are tested frequently. There's, there's no evidence that it can be transmitted from sewer to, to human, but, but the virus itself can, can live, and we do know it can live in, in the waste that flows into the sewer plant. So, so we're, we are sensitive to that, but that does get tested. All those get tested every day, and in some cases, multiple times a day.
I, I meant as a measure of the occurrence in town. Because colleges are testing dormitory sewer to find out if there's any illness within the dormitory. Cities are testing their, their sewer, you know, pieces to see what the level of virus is, which correlates back to how many people have it in town.
Right. We have, I, I know we've tested the flow. I don't know if we've tested it for, you know, to be able to extrapolate the, the, the density of the virus, and if that somehow traces back to, to numbers of, you know, maybe asymptomatic cases in town. I don't know if we've done that, but I know we've tested it for, for COVID. If I can find out.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I just had a quick comment for the town manager, if I could.
Yes, Mr. Rushton.
So, in relation to status of the academy building and municipal services, would it be possible to consider putting something on the town's website that would indicate the status of the academy building and how to conduct business with the various offices? If you look at the website, I mean, we have the health blog, but it's really just a bunch of news updates related to COVID. I see a lot of businesses and other municipalities have something that really catches your eye right away, kind of give you a status as to how to actually conduct business, because if you go to the website, you wouldn't know that anything has changed, and that any of the offices are just by appointment only, if that would be possible.
We can definitely do something like, like that.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. I think you want to change the landing page banner.
Yep. Yep.
Any other question? Yeah, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just, I, I, I don't want to be purveying rumors, but I heard this from my wife. Is there an impact to the district yet? How about that? I'll ask it in an open-ended question way, and Mr. George may know better than I and better.
I, I do not have any information. My assumption is going to be, it'll be disclosed by the superintendent and the school committee when they, when they have an update.
I, I, I can probably speak to that, having children in the system. I did receive a phone message tonight that I'm assuming many of the parents in the district have, indicating that beginning on Thursday, Thursday, Friday, next week, Monday, Tuesday, and the half day that was to occur on Wednesday, the children would be switching over to the full remote platform. So, I did receive that call from the superintendent tonight, as I'm sure many other parents in the district have.
Yes. Yes, we did. And so, the children will be home until January. If that's what anyone wasn't clear, but with Mr. Rushton, Mr. Rollins just said, my son will be with me from now until January.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think I saw something January fourth.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I, I, like I said, I didn't want to say that because I heard it from somebody else, and I didn't get the call, but hearing other counselors got the call, I appreciate that, and I think it's important under this update to let people know that.
I didn't get the call. I'll have to inquire why.
Very interesting. I have not received a call either, but they did post it to the Facebook page for the district earlier this afternoon. I, I just think there's been some lagging with the calls.
Okay. All righty, any other questions on COVID? All righty, moving on to the memorial building update.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick update. The ad hoc committee met last week to review some of the recommended changes to the design, and those basically included adding a mechanical lift on the inside of the building and, and retaining and reconfiguring the stairs so that there's access, interior access to the, to the both floors. Also, I believe we looked to eliminate the main level restrooms and rely on the lower-level restrooms, and then also eliminate the exterior ramp to the lower level, which wrapped around the building. Also, committee had asked to retain the, the handicap parking space, which is on the north side of the building, and then add an additional ramp to be able to access the front entrance from that handicap parking space, or it's slightly undersized at this point, but we think we can put in a, a better-sized parking space there with the appropriate ramp up to the, the front entrance. We did commission another cost estimate based on those changes and the additional items, which showed the additional items and the eliminated items, and, and in terms of cost, they roughly actually washed out. So, the construction cost is holding steady at about a million, three seventy-six, and certainly, we would like to get that project going and get it out to bid, so hopefully see some of the same savings that, that we saw in the Mitchell School, although drastically different scale, but certainly we'd like to see some of those same savings in this project as well. We're in the process of scheduling reviews of the schematic design with the HDC, historic district commission, the historic commission, and Mass Historic, and all those approvals are needed prior to being able to bid the project. And finally, we, we do have, we will be going back to the Community Preservation Committee with a revised maintenance and upkeep plan, and then, and then some revisions to the original application and looking to secure the second, second phase of, of the funding that they had indicated prior. So, that's what I have on the memorial building, so we're looking forward to getting it going. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to diversity and inclusion, ad hoc committee reminder.
Just my, my brief pitch, we're looking for around ten, up to ten residents that have some knowledge, skill, or ability to join the ad hoc town manager's ad hoc committee, and we are expecting the committee to provide recommendations to the town for ways to improve communication across town. And as we put in the notice, break down real and perceived barriers, engage traditionally unengaged populations, and, and propose ways the town can be a better advocate for diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, we are looking to begin, hopefully, I was looking to begin that committee in December, but COVID and a bunch of other things sort of had to refocus our attention internally, but we will get that committee up and going beginning of January and, and then move forward at that point. So, so, just making a little pitch, but certainly I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Dutton, for, for our next meeting, which next year's meeting, I'd like to ask if you could give an academy building update in regards to capital improvements that I know that were in play early on in the year, have gotten delayed, but I would like just an update on that, because I did get some questions in regards to accessibility and things of that nature. And then also, if we could get the, this isn't under your report, but get the committee presentations back on schedule. We haven't had one in a while.
And talk to the council clerk about that, and that's, we are, we are getting those back on track.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
And just something I'd like to add as a standing item, if we could, is a budget update. We, we had a lot of angst at the beginning of the current fiscal year around where our revenues would be, and just so that we're tracking, we know we're tracking, we understand what's going on, and not only that, but what's, what's it looking like for the future, so that we can have regular updates, and the folks at home can have regular updates on that. I think that would be great.
Well, do I think, both for FY twenty-one, the balance of this year, and then it's not, probably not too early to be giving, having updates on FY twenty-two and how that's shaping up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dutton. Do not have any discussions? Any committee reports? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to legislation for action. Order oh FY twenty-one dash zero two four, waive annual licensing fee twenty twenty-one. At their meeting held on November twenty-third, twenty twenty, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to nothing to recommend this measure. The Finance Committee voted three one one to recommend this measure at their meeting held on December seventh, twenty twenty. This measure may be finally considered this evening.
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
No, I, I think Mr. Rushton and I are the co-sponsors. It's just something we can try to do for our, our folks. We just voted on all the annual licenses and just try to help them through this COVID situation as best we can. I'll defer to Mr. Rushton if he has anything.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
Oh, just that, you know, the impact of the town should be minor, but the impact...
Uh, just that, uh, you know, the impact of the town should be minor, but the impact to the businesses involved, uh, could be significant as they go through, um, trying times. Um, so I, I'll be in favor of it.
Mr. Colan Botes?
I'm, I'm just wondering if we could get a net, do we have a number attached to this order? What is the, what is the opportunity cost of the town?
According to the town, uh,
About a hundred thousand. A hundred thousand.
It was, uh, you have better numbers, Mr. Gallagher.
Mr. Gallagher?
No, I just, just, um, I think Council of Fitzgibbons was a, was about to say the same number that I'm going to, but, um, the, um, the finance director, um, was at the meeting of the finance committee when they discussed this and obviously at our budget and finance committee meeting as well. When we voted on a budget and finance committee meeting on November twenty third, the number that he gave us was about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Follow up, can I just ask what? So that's, the town will be receiving eighty, eighty to a hundred thousand dollars that we were expecting. So what's gonna, where was that money gonna go and what's not gonna happen now that we're not getting that money?
Uh, that's a great question. So I, I can answer that, Mr. President, if you'd like.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dutton.
The revenues that we, we take in for licensing and, and, and permitting and so forth, uh, aren't segregated as separate dedicated revenue sources. So it, it's all referred to as general fund revenue. Um, in this particular case, uh, because, um, we did some very, very conservative revenue estimating when, when COVID first hit and we anticipated, you know, a more dramatic cut in local aid, which is also general fund revenue, um, that, that we are not seeing. We're not seeing that very, very dramatic cut in local aid, uh, or as dramatic a cut as we, we had anticipated. So, so our overall general fund revenues, um, have maintained sufficient enough to allow us to, to be able to pass along, uh, some of the savings to, to, I shouldn't say savings, pass along some of the benefit of that conservative estimating in the budget process, uh, for twenty one, fiscal year twenty one, allow us to pass along that benefit to the, to the folks that we charge licensing fees to. So, so I hope that answers.
So in, in essence, if we didn't pass this order, we'd have eighty to a hundred thousand dollars that we didn't, we weren't expecting to have, right? I, I just, I just think I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate and we need, and I, I think I want to make the point that we're, there's an opportunity cost of doing this, so it's not a free lunch.
Right. And, and Mr. Dutton, not, I, I would, and correct me if I'm wrong. You know, obviously this is a one-year waiver. Um, and we do have the benefit of having a pretty, um, not only with state aid, but a, a, a nice free cash that we're putting into reserves. So I think is, has been, um, also expressed by other counselors in this particular time for the, for the town to step up and to help in any way we can. Um, I don't think I've heard we're going to be cutting services, laying off people or anything to that extent. That would be a totally different, uh, conversation, but, um, if we can do anything to help local businesses, I think we're gonna explore every avenue. So that's just my opinion on it. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No, I'd just like to, um, echo Mr. Colin Botes and say absolutely right. You know, you, there, there is no such thing as a free lunch. And, but one of the, one of the intangible benefits that we, we may get from this, and Mr. George, you may want to speak on this later because I think you, you've been a passionate advocate of this is we, it, it sends a signal that Bridgewater is conducive to business and we're trying to do what we can. So, uh, in that sense, it might be, um, you know, although it can't necessarily be quantified, you know, kind of like downtown, uh, being accessible to walking and biking, it is something that people look at in the general milieu. Just my thoughts.
Mr. Colin Botes? I, I just want to make one final point and, and just throw out there that another way we could express our hospitality to business and our business friendliness might be to improve the roads and improve some of the infrastructure that private business depends on. I think we, we need to kind of keep that in the back of our minds, that there are public investments that will also benefit businesses, you know, besides a direct subsidy.
Yeah, I, I would, I, we, we, we have a prime example in Elm Street that I finally was able to drive down the other day. So I agree with you, Mr. Colin Botes. You know, this is one step, but other is public investment as well, which I agree. Any other questions on that? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Botes?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All right, moving on to resolution, our FY twenty one dash zero zero four, early voting location resolution. At their meeting held on December third, twenty twenty, the rules and procedure committee voted two oh to recommend approval. Fourteen days have elapsed per section. Excuse me. Eighteen, oh, excuse me, of the council rules and procedures. Therefore, this measure may be finally considered this evening. I'll obtain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Wood, any questions?
No, I just want to reiterate again, the, uh, the town clerk's office did a tremendous job at the last election with the early voting, absentee voting and the in-person voting, um, and, and the, the circulation within the building, um, to get the early voting. I was an observer one, one afternoon for a few minutes. Um, the, the, the setup was amazing and this, this resolution is just to, to reinforce the, the concept that you know, that it's a good idea to, to keep the voting near where the clerk's office works. Hopefully this courses. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Souza?
Yes, I volunteered for two days this year during the early voting, so I have firsthand knowledge of all the work that took it. And you could see the importance of the security of having it in that building. When I did different positions and where the people were putting the ballots in the box before they left and how they would transfer it down into this, to the office for the, and how those others were coming up and being processed in the corner. If you had to take that out of that building, that would really create a problem, a, a risk rather than a problem. Now, I think staying there is perfect and, and it's justified really because of the security if nothing else.
Mr. Colin Botes? You're on mute. Mr. Colin Botes?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, well, I certainly agree with the spirit of this, uh, resolution. I'm wondering if the language is right. I mean, it's can we resolve that something shall occur? Then isn't that kind of an order? Is, is the resolution more of an expression of sentiment as opposed to like an order? Just wondering if that language.
Mr. Rollins?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I, I think I tend to agree with Mr. Colin Botes. I mean, I, I think you can use the word shall in a resolution, but I think it's in some ways contradictory because the resolution is an aspirational thing that you're kind of lending guidance to, um, a, a thing or a, a, a group or a process. Um, so this is more of a guidance that the council is giving to the, to the town clerk's office. So, um, you know, certainly you could reconcile that, uh, by changing the shall, um, and it can be aspire to or, or try to or, um, any of the, any of those kind of, um, different ways of phrasing it.
I'd make a motion to amend to change shall to ought.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any discussion?
None, thank you. I think ought passes the aspirational hurdle.
Okay, Mr. Rushton?
None, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Sure, yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Botes?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Any additional discussion on the resolution as amended? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Botes?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Lush?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Thank you. None in favor, none against.
Hey, moving on to old business. Ordinance D FY twenty one dash zero zero three zoning ordinance zoning map amendment Pleasant Street. At their meeting held on November tenth, twenty twenty, the town council voted to re-refer this measure to the planning board and community and economic development committee for a second joint public hearing. The committees held a duly advertised joint public hearing on December second, twenty twenty. The planning board voted unanimously not to support the measure as written, however, would support with the proposed amendments by the community and economic development committee. This measure may not be finally voted this evening as further advertising is required pending the adoption of proposed amendments. I want to attain a motion to accept the amendments.
So. Second.
Okay. Mr. Souza, any discussion?
No, sir.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No, thank you.
Any other counselors? Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Um, so I think we need to work with our town attorney a bit to work through the process of zoning change, changes in the future. Um, as, as you're all aware, we saw this the first time, it went back to, uh, hearing structure. We had a hearing, we were told at the hearing that the planning board could not recommend something that had been, uh, approved, which is why you see the language or amended, which is why you see the language I proposed at that meeting, that we amended with the corrections, uh, after a lengthy discussion about the, the setback rule and, uh, the gateway district and some of the other pieces that were, uh, that were a question in the original motion. So, so this, um, this amendment, uh, solves a number of problems, um, from the original, original measure. Um, it takes a piece out that, that probably shouldn't have been included. Um, it changes the language. Uh, there was a, there was a scripters there about the, um, the, um, notification and it changes the language slightly so that, um, the other pieces of zoning take effect and are not, not adversely affected by this. So, um, I, I think at the end of that meeting, everybody was satisfied that the language was good, that it, 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 um, satisfied, uh, what the, the desire to shift over from industry into a, a business zone and, uh, that this language worked. So we presented here, um, as you can see, the planning board, as language says, they can't support it unless we make this amendment. So I, I hope everybody can support the amendment, um, as, as presented and, and we move forward from there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
On the, on the amendment, right?
On the amendment, yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Lush?
Yeah.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Botes?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Well, entertain a motion to send this to advertising.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Souza, any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None, thank you.
Any questions from the coun- any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Botes?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Lush?
Yeah.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, we don't have any new business, uh, citizens comments. If there are any citizens who would like to comment, uh, please keep your comments to three minutes. State your name and your street for the record. Are there any citizens who would like to comment?
Mr. Rogan has his hand up.
Mr. Rogan, go right ahead.
All right, thank you for, thank you for letting me speak, um, Steve Rogan, thirty six Howard Street. Um, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf, so on behalf of the, um, Bridgewater Historical Commission, which I'm the chair of. I just wanted to, um, give the town council an update that, um, in the past few months, um, the, myself, I, I've been in contact with the, um, town counselors out in, um, Bridgewater Somerset, England. Um, it, we're, over the summer and, um, recently we've had a lot of collaborations, um, talking back and forth about, um, the history of their area, history of our town. And on, uh, November twenty eighth, uh, I took part in Bridgewater History Day that they held out there where I was able to give a, um, brief synopsis of, uh, of our Bridgewater and, um, it was well received. Um, and and we also have created a, um, a group called Bridgewater Unite that will eventually be communicating together, collaborating on discussions together between the two Bridwaters. Um, and just recently I, um, heard from the town, uh, one of the town counselors that, um, they are sending us a, um, holiday card, um, that should be arriving fairly soon. Um, assigned by the, the mayor, the town council and, um, they are very, um, excited to, and keep the, uh, keep the communication, keep the connection going. So I just wanted to make the town council aware of that. Um, it's been a, it's been a very interesting, very, um, exciting, um, back and forth that we've had.
Thank you. Any other citizens who would like to make a comment?
Dr. Hunt has his hand up.
Dr. Hunt, go right ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, two quick points that I'd like to hear more, uh, from the town manager.
Dr. Dr. Hunt, name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, Carlton Hunt, eighty Austin Street. I apologize.
Thank you.
I was reading back in some former, uh, minutes and that kind of thing, uh, the last couple of weeks. And I'd like to get an update on the central square, uh, traffic design, et cetera. We've got two traffic studies. They're almost a year old now, and I'd like to see, uh, where we're at in terms of potentially getting a twenty percent design done on that as well as, um, the, there was a design committee, uh, not a design committee, but a, um, traffic's committee for the downtown, uh, and I thought that was going to get, uh, in place and then COVID hit. So I'd like to hear updates on what thinking is there. And the other thing is, as you guys know, probably know, we had a really good, uh, public meeting, uh, last week in terms of the comprehensive master plan update and we had our last meeting as a, uh, ad hoc committee, uh, consultant in the town, uh, this week. So I'd like to get a, the public to know what the next steps are because I think it's going to take another three to five months or so, uh, to get the final master plan update. So I'd like to hear a little bit more detail on what the exact steps are and the timing and content of the rest of the work. Thank you.
Any other comments by any other residents? And I don't see anyone, do you?
Um, I do not.
Okay, moving on to counselor comments. Uh, I'm going to start with Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, when this year began, we all had high hopes, what might be possible in twenty twenty. You know, perhaps more sports championships, a Fourth of July like no other, but planning for our summer vacations. But the year quickly turned into us making major adjustments to our daily routine. You know, being in lockdown, having virtual and Zoom meetings, social distancing, wearing masks and searching for toilet paper are all things that we never imagined when this year began. The COVID nineteen pandemic has caused us to cancel our traditional graduation ceremonies, Memorial Day services, Fourth of July celebrations and Veterans Day events. But we still found a way to hold alternative services in recognition. But these precautions were put in place for But these precautions were put in place for good reason. And those that were dealing with this and had the responsibility to implement these changes deserve a tremendous amount of credit. So as we end the year, it is only appropriate to say thank you. To thank you to all of our town employees, public safety, police, fire, administrators, staff for enduring something that although is still ongoing, you have shown the residents that you serve the importance of public service and the role you play in our community, particularly at these times. A special thank you to all the nurses, doctors and other healthcare professionals that live in our community but work elsewhere. For all that you and your families have been enduring these last nine months, your community has not forgotten you. Perhaps when all this is behind us and we get back to some normalcy or even before, we can recognize you in a more formal setting or event. The horrible effects of what the COVID nineteen pandemic has had on all of us has been staggering. Whether we have been affected directly or know someone who has, this has reminded us of what happens when sudden and unexpected events disrupt our lives. What we do is pull together. We pull together as a community and help each other out. Bridgewater has certainly done that. Many groups and organizations and residents have stepped up to donate in various ways to help our frontline workers with meals, gift cards, or placing a lawn sign in the lawn to show support. We have done what we can to support our local businesses, particularly the restaurant and food service establishments by purchasing gift cards, doing curbside pickup, et cetera. Even though this is what we have been doing, more importantly, now we need to continue to do this. But through all this, the residents of Bridgewater, for the most part, and without many complaints, have been adhering to state and local pandemic guidelines by wearing masks, social distancing, limiting gatherings and staying home. We do see a light at the end with a vaccine now in place. So now is not the time to let down our guard, but keep it up particularly during this time of year when we want to socialize more and be with family and friends that we have not seen in a while. Better days will come. Although the pandemic has been the number one focus this past year, other events have shown how Bridgewater is a community that comes together. Hundreds of our residents, along with civic organizations such as Citizens for Civility and Respect, Dice, have peacefully gathered several times to stand up and to show and voice their concerns about racial tensions occurring throughout our country, particularly this past summer. With civil unrest elsewhere, we stood peacefully. And as a result, more is being done at the local level on diversity, equity, inclusion. The town manager is working on putting together an ad hoc committee and has developed training for staff members on diversity and equity. We have had a very contentious national election. No matter what your candidate, no matter who your candidate was, Bridgewater saw eighty percent of its voters cast a ballot, either early, absentee, mail-in or in person, and without incident. Amongst all this, we were still able to accomplish and move forward in some initiatives and projects. Elm Street construction is all but complete and has attracted and will continue to attract interest from businesses looking to develop and move there. The new elementary school on South Street is moving along as planned and on time and under budget. The developer of the Broad Street property has submitted plans that continues to go through the planning process. And another businessman is looking to perhaps do a similar project at the Perkins Foundry land. Our parks and trail systems are getting some movement for development as well. There is also an ad hoc committee looking to address our needs for a new main fire station. Hopefully, we will see more movement on these initiatives in two thousand and twenty-one. Moreover, our town financial picture is very strong. We endured this past year without layoffs or pay cuts. And we were able to meet all of our financial obligations. But more needs to be done. I hope to see our downtown business district fill its storefront vacancies, more activity with the town park system and finally fix the common in the World War One monument. We also need to, as was discussed in our last meeting, a capital plan that includes staffing a facilities director and develop a plan to maintain our buildings. We have invested and continue to invest millions of dollars in our town buildings. And we need that maintenance staff in place to maintain them and not have a reactionary plan, but a sound budgetary plan when something needs to be repaired. We'll see the opening of the new elementary school in two thousand and twenty-two. And as I said before, we will soon hear plans for a new main fire station. I hope that I have the opportunity to continue to serve over the next few years and play a role and be an advocate for these and other initiatives in our town. We all know that two thousand and twenty-one will at least start off just where two thousand and twenty left off, but with the hopes that it will end much better. Many of us can't wait to ring out two thousand and twenty and ring in two thousand and twenty-one. So we can look forward to getting back to some sort of normalcy again by gathering as a community for our summer concerts at Music Alley, a normal high school graduation for our graduating class, a Fourth of July parade and fireworks, Autumn Fest, Bridgewater Police Five K Road Race, Christmas on the Common, and of course, the ever popular in-person coffee with the counselor. I wish you all a happy and healthy holiday season and a new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Loesch?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Mr. Chase? Mr. Chase, you're on mute.
Give me, just would like to wish everyone happy holidays and I hope everyone remains safe. Not only for purposes of avoiding COVID naturally, but just in terms of the storm that we anticipate this week. So for all, just happy holidays and I hope we all get through this very safely, happily. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I guess this is our last meeting, so happy holidays to all. Now is not the time to let your guard down, as Councilor Gallagher said. I do believe in the science behind the mask, behind social distancing. Social distancing, I've been using at work for over ten years. If it looks like you have a cold, I take a step back and I tell you about my five-foot rule. It works. A lot of people are traveling that probably shouldn't be. And, you know, in the in the past two days, I was, I heard someone say, I don't care when it was about the mask. I went into another location, I won't disclose, and the employees said their masks on, but they were down around their chins. And someone else claimed that the mask just doesn't work, so why bother? You know, one of the reasons for spikes are people have moved indoors. There's no outdoor eating, there's no outdoor events, people are indoors, people are sharing space. And this particular virus is very, very efficient at moving from person to person. You know, we're we need to keep the numbers down until the vaccine is available. And we need to encourage everyone in town to follow the right steps. So hopefully, this this holiday can be good and hopefully, you know, the curve doesn't take an uptick, as many experts are saying. And that we don't have longer lock-ins or work from home or school from home. And we can really enjoy the spring when it gets here. Thank you.
Mr. Rushton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just very quickly say it's been a pleasure to work with everybody over the last year, particularly these trying times through COVID. I wish everybody a happy holiday and a safe holiday. Look forward to working with you next year.
Mr. Souza?
See, yes. I do, I have, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Gallagher for his comments. Echo those comments, and I think they were fantastic. Secondly, let's go over to look what Bill Wood just said. We must take this virus really serious. Having lost a forty-nine-year-old family member to the virus, I personally know what it takes and what to loss really can mean. And please be safe, be safe, be safe. Protect yourself, your family, and at the same time, you're protecting others. Thank you. Everyone enjoy the holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Colombotus?
Nothing, great, thanks.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Nothing further than happy holidays to all the folks in Bridgewater, my fellow town counselors. And thank you, Mr. George, for running another great meeting virtually. I know it it can't be easy to do, and I don't envy your team doing that. And everyone stay safe.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, I want to say thank you for covering probably things that I couldn't have covered as eloquently as you. Mr. Souza, I couldn't agree with you more in regards to we need to take this seriously, protect ourselves amongst others. I also, two things I just want to add is you know, we've been talking about supporting small business. There's a real good push for Takeout Tuesday for our restaurants, but also, you know, Bridgewater has a lot of small businesses that can take care of a lot of our needs. So hopefully, people are taking the extra effort to be able to go out to a farm, get some eggs, get some fruits, gyms, physical therapy, whatever the case may be. It may be out of the norm, but in the short term, it's a little bit maybe of an inconvenience, but in the long term, we are supporting the bedrock of this community, which is which is small business from there as well. I think other than that, I want to wish everyone, before I do that, the other thing is we have a significant storm coming. I was looking at it on the news. It's going to be not only significant, but the timing of this is going to be a little tough. With everything that's going on, if I could ask, and and I'm asking this just as a reminder, because I know the community does it. Looking on your neighbors, it's already been one heck of a year, especially our elderly, our neighbors that have physical challenges. If this storm comes in as it does, not only does it really affect people physically if they can't get out, but it can also have an emotional toll if they feel that they're really trapped in a place that is going to be difficult for them to get out, even if it's just to get outside to get some fresh air. So looking on your neighbors, we do that as a community. I'm very proud of that. And I just put that out there as a reminder. Other than that, everyone have a healthy and happy holiday season. And very much looking forward to ending two thousand and twenty and hopefully starting two thousand and twenty-one on a much better footing. I'll obtain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
So moved?
Second.
This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colombotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday.